God bless you, my brothers and my sisters in Christ Jesus, our risen Savior. And so that we praise God, thank God for another day, another week, another moment to be able to express to Him our gratitude. Shouting out to each one of our New Hopeians and to all of our friends and family that shares with us during this time each week, so that we are grateful, appreciative of you. So that we thank God, thank highly enough of us at the New Hope Church to be a part of this ministry. So I want you to take a moment out to call, text, share our inbox, fellow brother, sister, family member, let them know that there's a weekly ministry here. It's on that it would do them good, not only today, but in the days to come. Sending our prayers, thoughts goes out to all of those who've gone through seasons of sickness, bereavement, and just going through seasons of difficulties. Suddenly, we want you to know that not only you are in our thoughts, but you're in our prayers. So we pray gracious in our watch, God, our Father, we come again as humble as we know how. We come gracious, Father, thanking you for another day, another week, that you've blessed us, you kept us, you smiled on us, you keep doing for us what we are unable to do for ourselves. God, we stand once again at the mercy seat, praying, oh God, that thou would have mercy on us. Thank you again for your grace, thank you for your mercy, thank you, dear Father, for your everlasting tender care. Look on us today with our pity, our compassion, as we confess, oh God, of our wrongdoing, that we have done some things that is contrary to your will and to your way. Forgive us now, oh Father, we pray now that you would look on us, thank you that you know, that you no longer, that you just didn't look beyond our faults, but you looked at our faults. Thank you for seeing that you met our every needs. As we come humble before the throne of grace, I ask, oh God, that I would do for us what we are unable to do for ourselves. We can't keep us, can't keep ourselves, but you is the keeper. Because the word said that you who keep it is real, don't slumber nor do you sleep. Thank you for your angels watching over us. Thank you, oh Father, for touching us, letting us see another day, another opportunity to call on your righteousness, another opportunity to get right today where we didn't get right on yesterday. Thank you for life, health, and strength. God, we just thank you for things as well as they are, knowing that there are others who are in worse conditions than we are. Keep us humble, keep us with a spirit of gratefulness. Bless those who are sick, those who are affected, those who are going through seasons of bereavement, season of difficulties, loneliness. Father, whatever the disease that got your peoples out of dis-ease, mend it together right now. Heal, deliver, set free, in the mighty name of Jesus. God, I plead the blood of Jesus right now to continue to cover us, continue to wash us. God, because we know that when we were sinking, sinking deep down in sin, there was nothing else that could do us any good but your love. Thank you for your love, thank you for your tenderness, your kindness. Thank you for being slow to anger, quick to forgive us. Bless us now, we pray for the body of, body of Christ, pray for our church family, pray for God, for mankind everywhere. God, we ask that I just bless our soldiers, thank you to God for our veterans. And God, we just pray, God, that I would just bless our children, our schools, our city, our schools officials, and those who have connection with the school system. And God, we just pray that you bless them meet their needs right now. Praying for that struggling mother, that struggling father, that struggling grandparent, that struggling caretaker and caregiver that is trying to keep the family together, trying to make ends meet. But God, I pray that thou would just intervene right now, bless only you can do. Father, we ask now you come in the personal Holy Spirit, touch now our spiritually ears that we can be able to hear, touch our eyes that we can see, our hearts that we can accept what you have to say to us on this day. We ask all these blessings in your sweet son, Jesus' name. We ask it all, for you is our rock, and you are our redeemer. In Christ Jesus' name, we ask it all, amen and amen. All right, God bless you, God keep you. Want to get right into our discussion and study on today, as we still dealing with the topic, the study on learning to be thankful. In Psalms one hundred, it's in its entirety, as we all do never graduate from learning or what God expect for us. We don't want to cause God to frown, we want to be grateful childrens of his, because ungrateful children are people who are not grateful for what the Father provides for, for him or her. So we want, we want to be grateful. So this is a learning process, learning to be thankful. And so we were dealing with Psalms one hundred, no, you're there, Psalms one hundred, and the first two verses dealing with our interest into his presence is that we ought to live up to the challenge daily, not yearly, but daily to what he says in verse number two, that a clause is that we want to serve the Lord with gladness. Is that we want to serve, we never want to lie, our laboring, our service, our work for the Lord to become dull. We don't want it never get to a point that our service, our laboring for the Lord will become hard work, or become a struggle, or become a dist- become a distasteful experience in our lives. So we want to, we want, we want to have gladness, we want to have a spirit of rejoicing. Don't, don't, don't ever get to a point in our, in our walk, in our laboring with the Lord that we don't have any, any joy. And we coming into his presence with singing. That's what he says there, that big clause of that second verse is lifting our soul unto the Lord, is that we gonna reign, we gonna cry out to him because of who the Lord really is, okay? So we gonna, we gonna, we gonna, we going to do that. So let's look at the second part of learning to be thankful. And that's in verse number three. It says is that we, we, we got to know the Lord, got to know the Lord. He is, is God. That's in verse number three. Know, know that the Lord, he is God. It is he who has made us and not we ourselves. So the second point that we want to bring out as we learning to be thankful is we got to understand God's personality, we got to understand God's personality. The Psalm it encourages us to know, the New Living Translation said we need to acknowledge that the Lord is God, okay? He is the one that made us, and we are his, we are his, we are his people, the sheep of his pasture. Okay, we got to know, we got to know the Lord. We got to know that the Lord is God. And I think that's one of the things that has, that has caused many to not fear God, not to worship God, not to be obedient to God, because they have not really taken the time out to know the seriousness and the nature of who God is. They don't reverence God, amen, they, they don't, they don't, they don't know who God is. They don't understand God and all of his names, out of all his name that the scripture talks about, gives us over twenty something different names of God. And, 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 and when it come down to, the Psalm said, he's the one that have made us. That's got, got to understand God as Yahweh, he's, he's the one that brings into existence whatever exists, huh? Are you listening to me? Is that you got to know, is, is that, is that he's the one that brings into existence whatever exists, nothing that, that we as humans can boast about as far as God, who he is, he's the one that brought everything into existence. Matter of fact, man can't take credit, everything that exist, existed before man and got here. Amen, amen. So, so he wanted to, God wanted to make sure that man don't think that he or she is the one that created. God made sure that before man got here, that everything was already in existence. So, so when we learn about the person of the Lord is that it results in new reason for us to praise God and to adore him, to give him adoration, to give him adoration. It, it's that, is that when we learn about, that's what Jesus was teaching to the disciples, learn of me, for my yoke is easy, learn of me, for my yoke is easy. Spend time with me, the only, only way that you and I can really learn, God, to learn about someone is to spend time, spend adequately time. So God help us to, 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 to never get to a point, thank God for he's sent in the Holy Spirit, that, 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 that will remind us, that will help us, that would lead us into a place that we can know about God. Amen, is that, is that, is that when we fail to learn about God, don't be, don't be afraid. You, you don't, you, we don't have to see him with our natural eyes to know that God exists. And so, and so everything we do, everything we are, remember this, everything we, that, that, that consists of our lives is that it's, has a direct connection to who God is. And so, so it's very imperative that we never forget about who we are serving. Okay, may I want to write that down? We never, we never want to get to a point in our lives that we forget who we serve. That's very imperative, very imperative, is that we are, and understand that we are the servants of a living God. Oh yeah, is that we serve a living God. And that's why it behooves us to understand who we worshiping, who, 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 who we showing up a week after week for. No, it's, we not, we just, we not showing up, we not coming to his sanctuary just to be, be counting in the numbers. No, we not, we, we don't show up each week, Sunday after Sunday, to say that we was just there. Are you listening to me? We, we not, we not showing up being a part of, of the work of Christ, kingdom building, just because we don't have anything else to do, is that we, we show up, we worship the Lord, we give him appreciation, we give him a praise because of a relationship that he allowed to happen, is that we are in a relationship with the Lord. And because of who the Lord is, that's, that, that, that alone gives me reasons to be thankful, not just once a year, is that I do it every day. And so, and so the Psalm it says, he reminds us about God's power. He reminds of, of the creative power of God. That's why we get that word Yahweh, is that we are in this world because the Lord in his great power created. When you read the account in Genesis, is that it tells us there was some things that God created. He created the great wells, he created man, and then it tells us then he made some things. There were some things that was created that was before, and, and that he, but, but, but he, he's, he's, he's the orchestrator, he's the one that, that created everything. Colossus tells us that all thing was created by him for him. Jesus ascended around, all of that. And so, and so, and so, so when we look at the creative power of God, is that, is that we, the word declares us that we ought to be thankful that he made us in his likeness and in his image. And that, that is something for which within itself to praise him for. And so, when we go to looking at his creative power, there is also his great recreative power, is that, is that he's able to recreate us, he's able to recreate things. And, and, and that's what, that, 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 that is what's so marvelous about the everlasting work of, of God, the power of God. And I think Paul helps us out on that when he talks about the recreative power of God. And when you get a chance, read Second Corinthians, chapter four, verse seven, write this down, Second Corinthians, chapter four, verse seven, dealing with the, the recreative power of God. He said, "But we have this treasures in earth in vessel, that the excellency of the power may be of God and not of us." Huh? If you just keep reading in that fifth chapter, Second Corinthians, chapter five, verse seventeen, he said, "Therefore, if any man be in Christ." He is what pastor? He's a new creature. All things are past away, and behold, all things become new. Amen, and so, and so just like we can understand the facts about his creation, when has he created the world, and, and, and that is a reason to praise and glorify him. But however, is that we ought to praise him, those of us who are saved, is that that same creative God is still able to recreate, he can take, he can take our old sinful flesh, we sinners bound for hell, and then, and then he can bring us to the realization of, of, that we was hellbound, but he can save us from going to hell, that he can transform us, thank God for his grace, thank God for his grace, unmerited grace. He don't give us what we deserve, deserve the death penalty, deserve to die, but he, his grace comes and comes to our aid. And, 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 and then the Holy Spirit began to transform us into the images, into the image of his precious son. And, and thank God is that those of us who have been redeemed is that we can, we can have the assurance, the assurance that Jesus is gonna come back and do what? Is that he's gonna take us to heaven when, when he comes back. And that's, that is enough right there to be thankful for. Not only does the word of God shows us about his power, but, but it also talks about us being purchased. We are his sheep, we are his sheep, we are his people, we are his sheep. Out of all of the animals that the Lord described his people as is being sheep. And so, when you look at that Psalms in one hundred, verse three, he said, "We are his people." And that's, that, I love, I love that, I love that word in there that kind of stands out. We are, we, we are his people, we are his personal possession. Oh yeah, it's that we, we are, we are, we are, we are his personal, we are his personal possession. Get a chance, read Titus, chapter number two, verse fourteen. It, it helps us out understanding that word, we've been purchased, is that we, 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 we've been redeemed from our iniquity. Paul tell the son and the minister Titus, he uses that word, redeemed, purified us because we are what? A peculiar people. Yeah, yeah, but is that he paid the price to redeem us through his son, Jesus, that died on a cross. We are, we are, we, we were under what? We were sold under sin. Yeah, yeah, but thanks be to God, is that he sent his son, Jesus, to die. And what Jesus did is that he paid the price to set us free. Yeah, 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 he, he did that. When you get a chance, read Revelation, chapter five, verse nine, Revelation, chapter five, verse nine, dealing with being redeemed, being purchased. Galatians, chapter, chapter number four, verse five, talking about us being, being redeemed, was taken off the market. And also First Peter, chapter one, verse eighteen, is that, is that, is that he, he, he paid the penalty, he released, we was released after the pay, after the payment of the purchase price. Is that, is that, is just, just like what, 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 what a master does to a slave, is that those passages that dealing with being redeemed in the New Testament, that's Revelation, chapter five, verse nine, give it to you again, Galatians, chapter four, verses five, and First Peter, chapter one and eighteen. So we need to thank God, we are his people. And now don't you let nobody fool you, is that we are special. Peter said, "We are peculiar, and ne- never let anyone tell you that you aren't someone very important." Huh? Tell yourself that I'm a child of the king. Talk to yourself, tell yourself, they already say you're crazy. So might as well just, you might as well just go ahead and live up to what they're saying, that yes, I'm a child of the king, okay? And so we praise him, first of all, because of his power, the word declared that, and then we praise him because he purchased us. And then thirdly, I want to look at is that he makes provision for us. And this, when he said, "We are the sheep, we are the sheep of his pasture." This verse is when we look at it, dealing with a flock, dealing with sheep. And sheep need the protection of the shepherd, is that we are on a, on, under a protective order. We've been over, we got oversight of the good shepherd. And so, so he promised us several things that ought to encourage us to glorify his name. All right, the first one is found, and I know you got your, I know you still got your, your notes out. The first one is three of them that I want to tell us about, share with us, that he promised us about provision. The first one is his presence, that's in Hebrews, chapter thirteen, verses five and six. As Hebrews, chapter thirteen, verses five and six, is that his presence, he promised us that he's gonna be with us. "The Lord is my helper," he said, "I would not fear what man should do unto me." That, that, that's in, that's in, that's in Saint John, chapter fourteen, verse twenty-seven, is that he promised to give us peace, okay? That, that's the first provision, the first one is his presence. He said, "I would never leave you nor forsake you," that's in, that's in Hebrews, "nor forsake thee." But then the second one is his peace, and that's in Saint John, chapter fourteen, verse twenty-seven. "Peace I leave you with you, my peace I will give you, not as the world give it. I give unto you," then he goes back and said, "Let not your heart be troubled, neither let it be afraid." These are, these are some provisions that he makes, he gives us. And then, and then thirdly, is that he gives provisions, he gives provisions. And that's in Philippians, chapter four, verse nineteen, y'all know that by heart. That's Philippians, chapter four, verse nineteen, for Paul said, "But my God shall what? Supply all of your needs, not your wants, not our wants, but according to his riches and glory." My Christ Jesus, my God, my, my, my God, my God shall supply. It's just like writing out a check. Christ Jesus is the signature that is on the check. By according to his riches. Okay? And so, so all, all, all these three sums up what a wonderful thing to, 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 just within itself to be thankful for, is that he forgive us his presence, his peace, and his provisions. And y'all know what David wrote in the twenty-third Psalms? That, 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 that the entire twenty-third Psalms sums up these three provisions that God provides for his children. And, 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 and when we, and when we understand these great truths about God's personality, and when we start looking at his personality and consider it, is that that's right, that's right there, New Hope. That's, that's right there, my brothers and sisters, is enough for us to praise the Lord for who he is. When you think about the name of the Lord, and I, and I don't want to, I don't want to go through all of them, but just think about what God, what he, what, what just his name means. Abba, which means father, and he, he, he's Jehovah Shalom, he's the Lord of peace. Just start thinking about the name of the Lord, Jehovah Nisi, is that he's our Lord, the banner. And then, then when you start, start thinking about Jehovah Raphi, Raphi, the Lord who hears thee. And so Jehovah Jairi, the Lord provides. And when you start thinking about his name, huh? When you start thinking about his name, he's, he's, he's Elshadah, God Almighty. Just, just throwing out a few of them, just, just start thinking about, he's Alpha and Omega, the beginning, end, and end. And so all of these are reasons within itself to praise God, just knowing about the person, understanding the personality, how God is personal to us. And so, so we go, we gonna stop right there in verse number three. Because we got, that's, 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 that's a lot right there. In order to be thankful, to praise God for. And so, so the, so the homework and the challenge that, uh, that we have before us is, is, is take a moment out and learn about the names of God. And when you learn about the names of God, is that know what those names mean. Know, know what, know what those names mean. And then right there is enough, uh, to praise God for. God bless you and God keep you is our everlasting prayer. Let us pray. Eternal in all wise God, our Father, we thank you for another day, another week that you've allowed us to spend time with you in your word. God, we thank you for who you are. You, you is the Lord of all the earth. Thank you for being our creator. You is God Almighty. Oh matter of fact, you's an eternal God. God, we bless you because of who you are. Thank you for providing for us. Thank you to God for going, uh, before us and you opened doors that need to be opened. Then God, you was able to close doors that needed to be closed. And God, we just thank you for being our all and all. God, uh, never allow us to get to the point that we feel like we don't need you, God. Uh, we need you every day. We just need you every moment, every walk of life. God, we just need you and forgive us of the times that in our past that we should have just taken moments out to tell you much obliged. And we find ourselves dealing with, uh, the fast pace of this world. God forgive us. We just want to take time out right now to tell you thank you. Because we understand that that thank you means what you did on yesterday. That thank you include what you doing for us right now. And then God, if we got sense enough to know that, that when we said thank you, that if you have us on the wake up call list in the morning, what you gonna do for us in the morning? So we just want to thank you in advance for all that you have promised, all that you have, that you going to bless us with. We bless you in advance. Lord, we love you, we magnify, we exalt your name. And we give you all the praise and all the glory for who you are. We ask all these blessings in your sweet son, Jesus' name. We ask it all. Amen and amen.